Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, and at 6:30 PM, you are at a Common Council of the City of Wausau meeting. Welcome, everybody. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is roll call.
We disconnected.
Are you connected? I think we're waiting for you, Alder Larson.
Eleven voting members present.
Thank you very much. Next item is proclamations. We do have one. Next Monday is Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and we will be recognizing that in the City of Wausau. All right, next up is, we have three presentations tonight. The first one is our Open Meeting Excellence Award. I'm going to pass the mic over to Clerk Caitlin because I feel like she's put in the lion's share of the effort here. So maybe you could tell us a little bit about this.
Yes, so the City of Wausau, we received the 2022 Award of Excellence in Meetings for, in recognition of our council meeting excellence for the City of Wausau. And they shared that the City of Wausau City Council displays excellence in their meetings, day in and day out, making themselves a prime example of dedicated local government leadership. They continue to improve and modernize their meetings to provide better meeting experiences for their community. Great job and congratulations, Wausau. So just want you to all be aware. So thank you for being open and eager to learn this new system.
Thank you, everyone, for going through the technical difficulties. I know it was a challenge to get us going, but I think we're there. Thank you. All right, next up, update on Third Amendment to Riverfront Declaration. Development Director Liz.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to provide a brief update to council. If you recall, the, this council passed a Third Amendment to the Riverlife Declaration, which is a set of, is a declaration that governs our Riverlife area. The Third Amendment was not recorded because the Riverlife condo development did not go through. So we had that amendment specifically ready to adjust the property proportional distribution of assessments and things like that. So because that development isn't happening, that amendment was not recorded. So we just wanted to make sure that council was aware of that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'm looking to see if anybody has pushed their button, and I'm not seeing any, so thank you for the update. All right, our third presentation, it looks like our police and, Police Chief and Deputy Police Chief will give a presentation on efforts to support Wausau's unhoused.
It's working.
Okay, good.
That's a good sign. Good evening, everybody. The mayor asked, asked me to talk about the city's efforts to support Wausau's unhoused population. I'll start, I talked to the news just a minute ago, and I'll start with the same thing I started with, with, with him. And that is, we have a great number of resources in our community. We have people that are working on this, this issue every single day, way more than just the City of Wausau. We have nonprofits, we have businesses that are involved in it. The county is to some degree as well. And so I just want to acknowledge the efforts of a lot of people in our community working to resolve the unhoused issue in Wausau. And, and certainly the city's part of that. You know, we've been here and others have been here talking to you folks about policy issues, about funding and that kind of thing. And you guys have stepped forward and made a lot of decisions to support the unhoused in our community. So I'm going to talk about some of those things as we go, as we go through this. I'm, I'm just going to start with a few slides on data. I recognize that there's a lot of information out in our community around the data and how many people are unhoused. So I just want to just talk a little bit about that. This, this data, the first 2021 and 22 data I supplied to you last year, I think in May, just to give you some context of how much law enforcement time is going to respond to calls for service in the community regarding homelessness. And so just to give you context to that, December last month, we, we had 77 hours devoted of time to responding to calls involving unhoused homeless people. So the calls have stayed the same. I think the hours are up a little bit, but I, I think it's steady, is what I would say about the law enforcement need in our community to respond for calls for service involving homelessness. The Wausau Fire Department has started to accumulate data on their response to individuals who are homeless. You'll see in 2021, they responded 259 times to somebody who's homeless, and in 2022, that number is 294. So again, I think that's relatively steady, a little bit of an increase for the fire department and their responses. The scope of the issue, again, the data, the data I just want to make sure I talk about and why there are different numbers depending on who is talking about the unhoused population. So this, this source is Marathon County Pulse. It comes from the point in time count. And I think it's important to identify that this counts both sheltered and unsheltered people. So people who are at the Warming Center are counted, people who are at the Salvation Army are counted, people who are out in, found outside, sleeping outside are counted as well. And so the number that, that the Marathon County Pulse has identified in terms of unhoused population is 221. And I think that's probably low because we know that not everybody is counted and identified and found on those, in those point in time counts. So that's, that's the number that Marathon County Pulse has identified through the point in time count. This is our data. This is compiled by, by Tracy Rieger, our Community Outreach Specialist. And this is information that is in the Public Health and Safety Committee Packet every single month since, since Tracy has started. And you'll see the numbers of people that are unduplicated and staying at Catholic Charities and the Salvation Army and the Women's Community and the Jail and Bridge Street Mission. So these are numbers of unduplicated individuals that are being supported by those respective organizations. You'll see in December, the, the number for the jail is zero. That's because we haven't gotten that data yet. That data should be coming later this week. And again, these are the, locally, the number of beds that are available for, for unhoused individuals through the Catholic Charities, through the Salvation Army. Of course, we have the Women's Community, Bridge Street Mission, and a few other places. And then the last place of, of counting data is places not meant for human habitation. So that would be individuals who are sleeping in the parking ramps, outside in the parks, in, in those types of places. And so, you know, the, the final question that I have listed there is, what is the number? What is the number of unhoused? I've heard people, you know, critical of the numbers that the Police Department uses. We, we identify usually about 30 to 50 unhoused people. And that is that number five category because that's primarily the focus of, of city government and the Wausau Police Department, is people that are living outside, living outdoors. And I think we've been pretty consistent in that number is 30 to 50. But if you start to identify and count people who are using these shelters and, and then in addition to that, you know, sleeping on couches or that kind of thing, sleeping in cars, that number starts to grow. So I've heard, you know, people use 300. I think that's probably a reasonable number. It's probably higher than that if you include all of those individuals in our community who are, who don't have a regular place to stay. So that's, that's what, what I think in terms of the, the number of unhoused in our community. Couple of frequently asked questions that I, I just think is important to, to touch base and talk about. I think I turned my page just a minute too soon. Yeah, there it is. Why do the shelter numbers fluctuate? So we have, if, we have daily census data for Salvation Army, we have daily census data for Catholic Charities and other organizations. And, but those numbers fluctuate, and there's, there's a, there's a variety of reasons for why those numbers fluctuate. It could be just weather, it could be that somebody decides to, to go and, go to the shelters so that they can have, they can get food because they haven't eaten for a while. They, they might have availability of other options that are more palatable. Maybe they're staying with friends, maybe they've decided to stay outside for the night and that kind of need. So there are a variety of reasons for why those shelter numbers fluctuate. And I think that, that letter E is a big one, too, and the current state of their mental health, whether or not they've received treatment lately, been able to get their medications and stay on their medications. Maybe they've got AODA, alcohol and drug issues that, that impact their ability either to get to the shelter or their interest in being at the shelter. Frequently asked question number two is, why do people choose not to stay in the shelters? And again, that AODA consumption, alcohol and drug consumption and mental health is a big one. You know, some people may say that it's not really a choice not to be at the shelter because they have mental health issues and aren't able to, to navigate their way there, or, you know, they have alcohol and drug issues so they're not able to, to get, to get there. Some of them are banned. You know, the, the Warming Center has a, a strike system, so people do get banned for 10 or 30 days from the Warming Center, depending on their behavior at the shelter. You know, the shelter, if you've been to the new CPC, it's pretty tight quarters for 25 beds. And so when, when people have behavior that disrupts everybody else there, they get strikes and potentially get banned for 10 or 30 days. And I do think it's important to identify that when they are, when, when it is cold below 15 degrees, those bans are lifted and they're able to go and stay there even if they have a, a current ban in place. So a couple of things that have been, I know, discussed a lot in our community. We had a, on December 4th, officers responded in the early morning hours, about 1:30 in the morning, to a woman who died underneath the Scott Street Bridge. They were in a tent. That, that investigation's still active. We don't have a, a cause of death that has been identified by the medical examiner yet. They are waiting toxicology results from that autopsy. So it's not appropriate for me to get, to dive into all of the details of that, but I would say that it was not, it was not a death related to, to freezing to death. That's, that's certainly the case. I am confident that homelessness and extended homelessness likely caused some deteriorating health conditions as a result of being homeless, but it was not exposure that was the result of, that caused the death. So I just want to identify those couple of things. And, and we also know, we talked with the shelters, that the two folks under the bridge that night did not seek shelter in, in one of the local shelters that night. The other thing that I wanted just to address quickly is the cold weather emergency preparedness. There, there was a lot of discussion. I was attached and copied on a lot of emails that went around regarding cold weather emergency preparedness. And I think it's important to identify that we have cold weather every year. We've had unhoused population for a number of years here, and our community has risen to the occasion and, and been able to, to house and make sure that people are appropriately cared for, both during the day and at night. Capacity did exist, not every night, but there was capacity at the shelters a number of those nights. The nonprofit sector rose to the occasion. They, they definitely did a good job collaborating, working together to have, to identify that, that point number two, which is organizations that provided funding at local hotels for certain individuals who didn't stay at the shelter. Some of the, some of the nonprofits opened and stayed open during the day through, by getting volunteers. So again, our community rose to the occasion. The Police Department, we give direction to our staff when they come across somebody who is unhoused, to give them the opportunity to try to find them a place at a local shelter. If the officer is unable to find a place at a local shelter and they are in dire need of, of shelter to, so they won't die from exposure, then we will, we will fund a hotel stay. And we did that during the, during this recent cold weather snap. And this is, this has been a consistent response for our community for, for the last several years. And so I, I just think it's important to identify, you know, what the city's done and how we work through those situations. We've gotten a lot of community feedback over the last probably four or five years. This has been something that we've been working on pretty extensively at the Police Department. A lot of the issues that we get feedback on are downtown. That's where a lot of our unhoused population stay and go during the day. And so we have a, a number of issues. Riverside Place, that's 11 Scott Street, kind of across the street from the Dudley Tower. We have had a lot of meetings with them regarding their employees being outside, about people who are walking through the building, panhandling, causing fear in some of the guests that they have there. And they are attached to the parking ramp with that walkway that goes over First Street between the Jefferson Street Ramp and Riverside Place. And they have, they have called about a number of issues in there. So we've had a lot of meetings with them in regards to that issue. We've talked, I think, before about the Washington Square, and Mark Craig has asked for a number of meetings. He's offered to pay for community service officers, which you'll see down, down the line in this presentation, you know, to just to have extra presence in the downtown area. We've met with people who own condos in the Palladium because of the issues that they see when they come down for mail and they encounter people and they're, they're scared of the individuals that are, that are there. So we've, we've, we continue to talk a lot with folks from the Marathon County Library. We do daily walkthroughs because they've requested daily presence of law enforcement there as a result of those issues you see on the screen, disturbances, fights, overdoses. They've had people that, that have been unconscious as a result of an overdose in the library. And so they, they request a daily law enforcement presence there. And, and we, we do our best to meet that need. We certainly have had a lot of concerns from citizens in the parks and under the bridges, specific to encampments. The gazebo, I don't even have listed up there, but a lot of concerns about, you know, walking through the parks. I know a lot of people that have commented to me that they won't walk on the, the Riverwalk Trail anymore as a result of the concerns, especially on Barker Stewart Island. And so we, we have a lot of concerns about the encampments that are out there. And I just have the, the lack of unity on there because I think there is a, for the most part, a lot of organizations are philosophically aligned that we're trying to, to help people on an individual basis, get them housing, get them, you know, treatment for AODA and mental health issues. But, but we do struggle, I think, a little bit, being aligned in, in communicating with each other on, on how we can best support everybody, all of the citizens that make these complaints, but also the people who are unhoused and deserve the, the compassionate care. So here's, I just brainstormed a list of city commitments that the city, most of which you folks have, have voted on to, to commit to the, the unhoused population and, and trying to remedy this, this problem. You know, a, a large grant that was, that was given to Community Partners Campus, ARPA allocations for low income housing projects, $800,000 for Catholic Charities Day Center, and 365 nighttime Warming Center that you guys have recently authorized. You've created a, a Community Outreach Specialist position. And, and I'll talk a little bit more, I think, about her in just a, just a little bit. But we had an officer position, we allocated Eric Lemron's position for 18 months. He worked very hard, had a lot of success in, in housing individuals and keeping them housed, sought and received grant funding for the McClellan Street House. Talk about why that didn't work out. Mostly that's because of one of the gaps we have is outreach, Community Outreach Services for therapy, and we, we just, we, we fell short there. We had people that were willing to take the housing, but we couldn't keep them housed, right? And that's, I think, the recurring issue that we're seeing here. We've partnered with North Central Healthcare to provide that outreach case management with the McClellan Street House. That ended up kind of being the, the thing that stopped that project from continuing forward. We developed and led the Marathon County Homelessness Task Force. That was in 2018. That homelessness task force still, still exists today and is working today, and it's led by the United Way. So here's the things that I've, that I think are the most significant challenges here in our community. And it's not about getting people housed. I think we, you know, we've done a pretty good job with getting people housed, but it's difficult to keep them housed because we don't have that case management that is out in the community going to, you know, in the McClellan Street example, we don't have somebody that was there every day, 24/7. And even if they're not 24/7, they have to be there every day to do that, that case management of the individuals there because they have a lot of issues and things that, that need to be managed. And so if we don't have that, that back end support, the housing doesn't matter as much. It's, it's to keep them housed, we have to have that back end support for that case management. We have a lack of inpatient treatment facilities for alcohol and drug abuse. You know, we, we know that there's a treatment program that the county will be opening through North Central Healthcare. It was open, it closed during the reconstruction project at North Central Healthcare, and we're hopeful that that'll be opening again in the not too distant future, but that, that's definitely a need here. And then, of course, lack of adequate low income housing options, which I think we've talked about quite a bit. One of the examples in, in regards to lack of case management, Tracy Rieger, our, our Community Outreach Specialist, does her best to fill the gap for case management. She, she does a really good job with that, but there's just not enough time in the day to do case management with, for one person, for all the individuals that she has contact with and that she's housed. Just to tell you a quick story, she had a woman who she housed, who didn't have AODA issues, but did have mental health issues. And so Tracy was stopping by there on a daily basis and eventually wasn't able to stop there every single day. One day she stopped by there and the individual was in a mental health crisis and ended up being committed on emergency detention. The apartment was, I can't believe the, the shape that it was in. The, the woman said voices in her head were telling her not to flush the toilet, not to put the toilet paper in the toilet. And so you can imagine the state of the apartment after a few days. And Tracy, Tracy went back and cleaned that apartment. You know, that's the kind of work that she does, it's the kind of commitment she has to the, the people in our community and the people that she's serving. So, but we need that outreach case management in order to be able to, to do a better job for the people that need, need help in our community. I put these items up here as possible short and long-term solutions. These are things that have been discussed in the community. I'm not necessarily advocating for them or at, you know, arguing against them. These are just, it's information for you to consider as, as potential things that we should be thinking about both short and long term. We had the McClellan House model. You know, there was some success in that early on until we lost the case management assistance from North Central Healthcare. Increase both inpatient, outpatient treatment resources. That's an obvious one. If we can do that, that would be great. We have been in discussions, the mayor and I, with the county administrator. There is a, a new director over CCS in North Central Healthcare. That's Vicki Tilka, and she used to be the Director of Social Services. So we've been in contact with her about some of these concerns and issues, and they've been receptive, but we don't have any action as of yet. We could, we could hire additional community service officers and have additional presence in our downtown area. Again, possible private funding, that's a decision that you folks would have to make on whether or not we should accept that. We've talked about elimination of drinking in parks or just in certain parks. We did that at the 400 block, and it kind of moved that problem from one park to another, but that's something to be considered. Strict enforcement of camping in parks. We've talked about this at Public Health and Safety quite a bit, and whether or not the, the police should be enforcing that in a very strict way or not. Tiny home concept, there's been a lot of discussion about that. And then creating sanctuary space, like identifying a park and saying, hey, unhoused individuals, you can go live here, you can stay here. That's, that's, I would, I call that lacrosse model because I know lacrosse did that. I think if you talk to public officials in lacrosse, they said that was a really bad idea for a variety of reasons. So I think I've talked long enough. That's, that's what I have for you in terms of what, what is going on, kind of current state here in Wausau on the unhoused issue. So, thank you. I don't know if the mayor has anything to add, or the deputy chief might have something to add to it.
I might open it up, too. I mean, you and I have had several conversations, and I've had opportunities to ask a lot of questions, but maybe this body hasn't necessarily asked questions, or if there's a, a statement, or if there, I'm entrusted in hearing from folks, if there's anyone. Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question and a, two questions. One is that you had mentioned the pulse count of 221, is that county or is that city?
I think that's, that's county.
County.
Yep, that's, that's countywide.
And you mentioned lack of unity. Where would you envision this unity come from? There's got to be a unifying force here. Is it the county?
I'd, I'd love it for it, for it to be the, the task force that's led by the United Way. I mean, Ben Lee is, is somebody that's been involved in this work for some time, and, you know, he's, he's doing his best to try to bring unity to that, to that group, both public and private.
If you don't mind, I would also, I, I think the county is looking to be a part of this. I had outreach from a couple of supervisors, and I, one of them I, I sent over to Ben Lee at United Way, and she's now going to be a part of the task force meetings. And I think that the new sheriff has also expressed some interest in being part of these discussions and solutions. And like you said, North Central, I think that's really an important part, too.
Yeah, I think the county's got a vested interest in this work. It's not a city problem. We know that, you know, there's, there's a fair amount of unhoused issues in the River Mountain, for sure, but I know it extends, you know, all throughout the metro area. I mean, in my presentation, I identified the, you know, Marathon County Library. I mean, that's a Marathon County-funded organization and entity. And, you know, they're asking for daily police presence there. So, so that's a concern. Certainly, there, there are times when we, we have to make arrests for people who are unhoused, so that is also impacting the jail and Marathon County Jail. So they have a vested interest in this work, for sure.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I guess just an update. The mayor and I continue to serve on the task force that Ben Lee is coordinating through United Way. That group actually has made some really good progress as far as coordinating agencies, bringing agencies together that all do the work. And really, the task force started in the Police Department to get the right group of people and right perspectives around a table and then figure out what change can happen. And I will say, change takes time. But prior to, and we've, we've had a seat at that table since about 2017, and we've made some small forward progress. But until this council and this mayor and the receipt of ARPA dollars, the city was present at the table, but had brought $0 to the solution. We were reliant on nonprofits and the United Way to fundraise and do the work, and we were supportive of that work. But our engagement with the work was really limited to, do we have things in our ordinances that are roadblocks to your success agencies? You know, do you need zoning changes? What can we do for you? And the resounding response that we got from them often is, do you have any money? Because we all need money. And up until this cycle, the things that we voted for, that the police chief showed on his list, we were not at the table with money. We are now. We've got an outreach coordinator, we've got affordable housing projects going on. We are funding initiatives to shelter people when they weren't able to get shelter before, year-round, all day. I mean, standing up CPC and getting help for people all under one roof, we were integral in that. And so, you know, I think for anybody that wants to say, well, the city isn't doing enough, or the city hasn't done anything, or the city has no plan, those folks are woefully misinformed. And so, that said, though, there's a positive impact to be had. And, you know, I have been serving in local government since 2008, and the homeless issue is not new. I've watched three mayors grapple with homelessness. We were, I would say, completely absent at the table prior to 2016. From 2016 to about 2021, we were at the table, but of course, brought no dollars. Now we're at the table and we've brought some money. And so I think that's where we can see some positive momentum. And can see some positive momentum. And, you know, I think that a number of the things that the chief highlighted as opportunities and challenges are legitimate. I think that there's a lot of different types of solutions that that task force is talking about and considering, but local government can't and should not go it alone on a solution. You know, we shouldn't be out there creating social service departments and hiring staff to do this because we will be very quickly duplicating the efforts of others who are experts in it. So I thank you for the presentation. I think that it's important to get accurate information out there. And I think that as we go forward, we will see some great success from our outreach coordinator. We already are. But I think that, you know, we had a number of months where we were literally backsliding all of the progress that Officer Lemarand had achieved, and he had those numbers cut about in half. That slid backwards awfully quickly when he stopped. And so it's going to take some time to get back to where we were. But I, I think that we can certainly have a positive outlook on what we see coming forward. So, you know, I would just say to the community and to everyone here, don't assume nothing's happening because work is happening all the time. And the task force actually, starting next month, is going to monthly meetings. Ben Lee has hired a staff person whose task it will be to carry some plans forward and work to lift 10,000 people out of poverty. That is no small order. So, you know, that said, I think that there is really good things ahead, you know, both for us and for the community. So I think we, we should stay the course and continue being at the table with our dollars and ideas, and I think good things can happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that I've talked a lot to the chief about and other mayors in other cities is, you know, is this, I mean, you, your team ends up being the team that gets called and dispatched to some of this. And, you know, sometimes people, seeing those interactions, it's unsavory or whatever. And I have asked other mayors what they do, and really, this is how you start. You know, we've talked a little bit about community outreach, what that looks like. And that's why we started with Officer Lemarand and moved to Tracy as a non-spawned employee to deal with this. So I think we're moving in that direction, but it is hard. And it's hard to have these conversations without feeling emotional. I know I do. I know some of you have been on the receiving end of my calls, so thank you. And thank you for this data.
You're welcome.
Other comments? Yes, Alder Lukens. Sorry, I'm looking at the buttons.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, we're good.
I goofed. I have a question, and maybe I missed this. I thought that you said, or did you say the McClellan House did not succeed? Did you explain why? Because if you did, I missed that. I'm sorry, Innet.
Yeah, so I think, I think initially, we were seeing some good success with it. So, you know, Officer Lemarand was able to build relationships with individuals who needed housing, who are chronically homeless. And, you know, eventually they trusted him enough to, to go and stay at the McClellan House. And initially, we had, we had case management from North Central Healthcare that was there on a regular basis, helping individuals work through their individual issues to help, you know, reduce their, the impact of mental health, reduce the impact of their AODA issues, to help, you know, get them, get them a job. I mean, some of those individuals, we were able to, to get, get jobs, get, get housed, move out of that house. But as, as time wore on, North Central Healthcare case management wasn't able to be there. And so when you remove that case management piece, you know, then you're just putting a roof over somebody's head and not helping them move towards the next step.
And I might be able to fill in a little bit too. You know, eventually, I think having the right kind of person available for case management is important. Having that person empowered by their employer is really important. I think there were some challenges with, you know, just where in the organization this position was coming from. So it was, it was tough in that way, too.
That's true. Yes.
Other questions or comments? Thank you for the report. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Alrighty, next up, public comment. I have a bunch. First up, Orlando Alfonso.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Ben and the police department for the job that they've done so far with the situation at hand. Regarding this recent tragedies involving the homeless and the request by Oliver Tom Killian and Gary Gisselman to convene a committee of the whole, it makes great sense to have this meeting, and especially to coordinate with Marathon County as we seek potential remedies for this issue. But as Wausau's recent financial problems evidence, the city and its taxpayers are at their limit. We're tapped. What we need now is discussion that is realistic, dispassionate, not emotional, or activist-driven. Having spent some time working and volunteering at St. Vincent de Paul and having spent quite a bit of time researching this topic, we can all agree, this topic is complicated. For the, for the decades, the problem has mistakenly been framed as economic, as if it could just as easily be you or me on the street simply due to job loss. Though economics is certainly a component, substance addiction, and primarily mental health issues are the true drivers. As the frontliners like Ben can attest to, the combo is a killer, quite literally. Historically, much of the problem can be traced to the closing of the big state and county mental health hospitals in the 50s and 60s. So, how we view Chapter 51 commitments needs to be a part of this discussion. The immediate solutions are unfortunately and inevitably going to rest with the police and fire departments. They are the frontline contact. They need the resources. The long-term solutions, while they're best left with mental health professionals, not the city council. What is certainly not needed is a Department of Social Development and Action, a new city bureaucracy that will increasingly feel that funding charities with taxpayer money is an acceptable form of mission creep. The city's recent donation of $778,000 so that Catholic charities can provide 25 beds, folks, please review the math. I'll leave the discussion of the disturbing growth of taxpayer subsidized charities for another time. I don't believe much in global warming, and my science says that if it does exist, it reliably leaves central Wisconsin between November and March. The real immediate issue to the problem is the availability of emergency space for these cold nights. Recently, radio commentator Chris Connolly had some interesting proposals for the existing and underutilized buildings for such a purpose as this. I believe even that the good friar, William of Occam, would agree. Maybe let's start here. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I have Bruce Grau.
Bruce Grau, 1115 North 10th Street. I strongly support the development of a new city department, independent from the police, dedicated to the health and social needs of poor and low-income Wausonians, comprising almost half of our population, to prevent and end chronic homelessness while effectively addressing immediate needs that arise, such as shelter from frigid winter conditions. Why do we need this department? Well, let's look at how cities responded to the December 22 emergency as an example. Milwaukee opened shopping community centers, 17 in all. La Crosse mayor issued an emergency declaration to open city-owned buildings as overnight shelters. I contacted the mayor and the president of the Council of Wausau. The president assured me the situation was in hand based on the assessments she was given by the police and Catholic charity staff. Neither of these assessments were garnered from an on-the-street assessment on the need for shelter. The health department was ready to act but received no command. I know of only one group that hit the street to find those needing shelter. They found several individuals, some couples and a family, whom they all put in a hotel using $3,000 that they acquired in donations within two days. The current approach taken by the city is not based on a sound assessment of the true need. This is absurd when over 393 fellow citizens stated they faced housing and security. The current approach taken by the city relies too heavily on sheltering model that places people into congregate spaces devoid of any privacy or respect of people's attachment to their belongings, two significant needs of traumatized people. The current approach taken by the city relies on structures, not systems, that along with a trauma-informed approach are proven to heal those afflicted by chronic homelessness. Placing a person with complex needs under a roof and calling it a success without providing multilevelled support reveals ignorance and wasteful use of our money. And in light of such need, redirecting significant amounts of ARPA money to non-COVID relief projects is heartless. The amount directed towards bubblers, light bulbs, a new visitor center could build a self-governed, supported tiny village. Taking some liberty, quoting Martin Luther King, "True compassion is more than providing a warm cot on a frigid night for an unhoused person, but understanding the edifice that causes homelessness needs changing." Your job is to do both. You can stop the misery and the death like Jenny's, eliminate the need for GoFundMe campaigns, and start this department.
Thank you. Next up, I have Sandra Couch.
I struggled to decide which message was the most important to speak about tonight. And then after listening to Chief Levins, struggled again about what I'm going to read off my sheet. First and foremost, though, I am asking the council to approve the committee of the whole meeting requested by Tom Killian and Gary Gisselman. And I want to personally thank both of you for moving forward in action with this issue and homelessness. I also want to thank Carol Lukens for her volunteer time during the deep freeze emergency. That was a wonderful example to set. Your efforts are greatly appreciated by the Community Outreach Task Force. Looking at the deep freeze crisis, the task force, through the financial support of their incredible members in the community, was able to provide hotel rooms for over 10 people, including a family with two children, one with special needs. They were turned away from every agency, not because the agencies didn't want to help them, but that they couldn't help them. And they would have spent Christmas in their car in dangerous, extreme temperatures. I also, oh, the task force is also responsible for providing many volunteers and food at Open Door, again, through the compassionate, community-minded members. And Open Door and Bird Street Mission deserve a huge pat on the back. They were the true heroes of that weekend, opening their doors and setting aside their holiday plans to make sure people survived. Wanted, just talk off the cuff, which I'm not very good at, but I want to talk off the cuff about some of the things that Chief Levins had said, and that I was a little surprised in his speech. Tiny home villages incorporate case management, incorporates independence and pride. It gives people a chance to take a breath, to get stabilized in their own space. It accommodates those that are chronically homeless, which the shelter model does not. It also accommodates those with severe mental illness, which, again, the shelter model does not. We had an individual that had to stay outside during that deep freeze simply because even we couldn't help him because he could not be in a hotel. A tiny home village would have accomplished sheltering him for that night, for those deep freeze times, and for longer. What needs to stop is the bullying and the backstabbing and the emails and all of that stuff that is just counterproductive. We should be joining together as a community with the agencies, the council members, and the community members in solving this problem. And I also briefly want to quick say that I disagree with McClellan House being a failure. It did show what case management can do. And I'm sorry I'm going over my time, but there was an individual that we could not reach, months and months and months of trying to talk to him, to even get him to accept materials from us. Officer Lemarand not only reached him, housed him, and employed him. And he remained housed and employed until that program fell apart. He would still be housed and still be employed if Officer Lemarand's house and program was still in existence. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Ledecky.
Hi, I am just here to do a quick update on the unhoused citizens of Wausau. To say December has been challenging would be an understatement. Our clients are tired and many of them are sick. We have had multiple people hospitalized due to COVID, influenza A and B, RSV, and unfortunately, all the other crud we're suffering with ourselves that is currently going through Wausau. I personally had COVID in December, and I couldn't imagine trying to get over that while staying on the streets. Then we throw in a sub-zero storm that took conditions from bad to near fatal. Agencies and advocates scrambled to put a plan into place. It is hard to prep for these storms on a normal week, but for it to land the week of Christmas made it much harder. Multiple agencies were able to come together to make different options available. Open Door was able to extend their hours so our clients had daytime shelter from the elements. The Community Outreach Task Force heard Open Door needed volunteers to make the extended hours possible and helped generate volunteers who could help with donating their time, meals, and other donations. Bird Street Mission was able to open up Monday and give our clients shelter and food. Our group helped raise funds to offer hotel rooms, as you've heard. But it was really amazing to watch the city of Wausau come together. It, it really was. You know, it was the hardest of times, and people were dedicated to help people they've never met. And I know there is quite a few of you that helped here with advocating and donations and their time, and that was not lost on any of us. Between December 10th and January 9th, Open Door had over 1,000 visits. They had 200 unduplicated people come to them for help in one month. A conservative guess would, that would be 90% are unhoused. That is 180 unhoused citizens. The Warming Center and Salvation Army have around 55 beds. That means that's 127 unaccounted-for clients that only went to Open Doors. Do you know what numbers were not in here? Families. We didn't have any shelter places for families. Hotels were the only options. They can't go to the Warming Center. Salvation Army was full, and they can only take on so many. So when we do have these severe storms come through, I do want to bring that attention that the kids are out there. We don't have anywhere for them to go. I was very excited to hear about the meeting that was suggested for tonight. I think it would shed a lot of light on what all the agencies are experiencing, and I'd love to throw my hat in the ring and be a part of that conversation. If I could make one suggested to the council, I would ask that the meeting, that at the meeting, all the different groups that make up our unhouses discussed and why trauma-informed resources are available. It's not a, it's not going to be an easy conversation, and I don't think anybody's looking for the city council to come up with the answers for us. We just want your help in finding them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Brian Stolzmann.
This is not about the homeless thing, though.
You could talk about whatever you want to talk about, actually.
Okay. Other than I love Sandy Kelsch, if that helps.
There you go.
Okay. 1411 Lake Street, you guys will be voting on whether or not to change the zoning to allow some townhouses to be built. And earlier today, because I was on the road, Yvonne, one of my neighbors, sent you guys all an email from me. So hopefully you all got it. So I just wanted to touch on a few things, because in all honesty, I didn't really think I wanted to be here. But after the zoning meeting last month, I have to be honest, I thought it was done. It was just rubber stamped. It was like everybody decided before we were done talking. So there were 12 of us in a neighborhood that I just moved to about eight months ago. We met out in the hallway, and we're licking our wounds and thinking, boy, we got our butts handed to us. And one of the developers walks through, and I thought, wow, this is a great opportunity. He can hand out business cards and say, hey, I'm not the bad guy here. I want to help you guys out. So for those of you that don't know, we live in a very depressed, you know, neighborhood. We don't have developments like this. But at the same time, a lot of people have been there for decades, and they enjoy the way it is. So when the developer walked through, it would have been a great opportunity to say, I know you guys have a lot of questions. There's been misinformation, but I'm here to help. Here's my business card. Call me, and I'll answer any questions that you have, and we can work on this together. Maybe we can build a park for you. Maybe we can make this a win for... Maybe we can build a park for you, maybe we can make this a win for everybody, including us. That did not happen, just the opposite. Now, this is a touchy subject. Some threats were made at that point, and I don't know if this is the arena where I go into what those threats were. I'll let you give me some guidance on that.
As long as you address your comments to me.
You have, okay. So Mayor, we're out there, instead of what I just talked about happening, some words were exchanged, nothing too major, no profanity or anything like that. But this individual turns around and says, you should be thanking me for this. And then he goes to Yvonne, my neighbor, and says, I know a lot about you. I could expose you in front of these people right now. Would you like that? Let that sink in. We were all shocked. What do you do at that particular point in time? And this guy is possibly going to be our neighbor. That's a bad neighbor. So if you vote for him changing the zoning in this area, well, then you are basically rewarding bad behavior. I find that bullying, I despise bullying. Arrogance and entitlement, I don't think that's cool for any neighborhood. And then, I've only got 30 seconds left, there's been a lot of talk about, you can't talk about this, you can't talk about that, and one is about how it changes the view that we all have. Well, there is a value to that. $350,000 per unit, as was announced at the last meeting, this was all new to us. I did the math, that's $2.8 million. That's why they want you to change everything in our neighborhood for profit. Profit for a few with giving nothing back to us. So it seems to me, and everybody else in the neighborhood, it's like all take for the few that have money, and if you have money, you get what you want. We're hoping that doesn't work that way. So because of that, I ask you to vote no on the zone changing, and thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next up, I have Yvonne Nutter.
I guess I'm not as prepared as what Brian was. I just assumed if I wrote a letter, that would suffice. I'm not very good at public speaking. I don't know if anyone has read my letter and has any questions.
So during public comment, we actually can't?
Okay.
I'm going to answer that question for you.
Okay. And yes, I was harassed by Gizo out in the entryway out here, and I don't think that's very professional on his part. I've had instances of him in the past with some things were pretty unscrupulous on his behalf. And I don't know, I don't think that's right for him to be out there bullying me. I just hope the city don't condone his behavior and give him his way, because this is just a money thing for him. He's going to be taking lots of things from us in our neighborhood, and we are getting nothing in return. He's taking the beauty, the natural beauty of the lake, the views of the mountain, and he don't care about us. He don't care about the city. He just wants to fill his pockets. That's how we feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Vicki Harness.
Hi.
Hi there.
My name's Vicki Harness. I live on South 9th Avenue in the neighborhood where you want to rezone. I'm here for two purposes. One is that I am also against the rezoning of that small area for townhouses, because I think it just crams too many people in a very small area, which is all very small, single-family homes, and would cause horrible traffic issues as well as safety issues for people in the neighborhood. And I also think that we should be looking at taking care of our homeless population before we have big developments with $300,000 condos in neighborhood where houses run $60,000 to $80,000. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Nick. I'm sorry, I believe it's you. Last name begin with a B. Thank you.
Nick Bancek.
Oh, thank you.
I'm a project engineer with Marathon Technical Services, commenting on behalf of the rezone project at Lake in Chella Streets. There was three things brought up at the planning commission meeting. I just wanted to answer those concerns that they had at that time. One of the concerns was that they were going to be just renters, and I'm speaking on behalf of the developer, that he wants to have those as condos where they are owner-occupied, so they would not be rentals. The second question was, how are they going to get sewer and water services to the property? There is sewer and water publicly available just to the east. It's about 25 to 50 feet off of the property line in a public easement, so that should not be any concern. And then the other comment they have mentioned as well today about the views being obstructed, which could potentially be the case for the people to the north. By right, they could build two single-family houses on those properties, two stories high, and do the same thing. So I'm here if you have any questions during our actual item on the agenda.
Thank you. And lastly, I have Gizo Udermelli.
Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing me out. I came to Wausau 22 years ago, and I'm very proud to call this city as my city. I'm a citizen of Wausau, as you are, as all of you are, very proud of my little city, and I love to see our city striving, building. And back then, I felt very welcome here. Last time, when I was at the meeting of planning committee, most of the people who are speaking against this development, they don't know me, and I have never met them in my entire life, except Yvonne, who I had privilege to help to purchase the house where she is living. And I don't know what kind of harassment these individuals, these citizens of Wausau are talking, but when I left that meeting, I was called names, and I was called by Yvonne as an idiot. And I asked her to stop harassing me, actually, and I told her that I will be calling police if they don't stop. So honestly, I don't understand your vendetta against me.
Could you please address your comments to me?
Yes, I don't understand why these, why the neighbors are so concerned, because I think this development will improve the values, will give Wausau another beautiful, nice place for citizens of Wausau to enjoy. Those citizens are also, they have same rights as everybody else, to enjoy the lake, enjoy the view. And by the way, the amount what will be spent for each unit, I can't determine that, because that will depend on many different factors, economy, cost of the materials, the development. And I also want to make sure that I am not a big developer. I work very hard. I'm a broker. I've been in real estate industry for more than 19 years now, and I'm very proud what I created, not for me personally, but also for this city, the place that I call my home. I'm very proud to call this place my home, and I just did my first development on Fulton Street. I'm not a big developer, not a big guy, not with the rich pockets like I was described. I'm just very passionate, small business, who cares about this city? And I hope we can see the win-win situation. At the end of the day, the tax value this development is going to create, maybe that will help also to solve the homelessness problem. There will be some additional taxes for this city. Maybe that will help something that is important for this city. But I do care that we build beautiful buildings, and we can be proud of our city altogether. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who supplied public comment today. Next up, I have committee reports. The Board of Public Works Insurance Claims for October 2022 through December 2022, that will be placed on file. All right, next up, we have our consent agenda. That's file number 221101 through file number 2301110. I would entertain a motion. I have a motion by Alder Larson and a second by Alder Henke. I do have a request from Alder Killian to remove item number 221110, the resolution approving 2023 street reconstruction projects. So I will pull that, so we can discuss it after the minutes if there's no opposition. I'm not seeing any. Any comments on the rest of the consent agenda? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. And now we will follow up here on file number 221110. This is a resolution from SISAM approving the 2023 street reconstruction projects and authorization to let bids. It looks like I have a motion by Alder Henke and a second by Rasmussen. Any comments? Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason I'd ask this, just to be pulled for discussion and a vote, is it's my understanding that it was associated with a public hearing, and when I did review and read the minutes of that hearing, there appeared to be significant involvement from citizens, and there were multiple citizens who provided input, and there were concerns, in my recollection, about affordability, or how necessary on certain, near certain properties. Some of these things may be in relation to affordability, and we often hold public hearings, and no one shows up. So when there were multiple citizens who did give input at a hearing, that did make an impression on me, and I simply wanted the ability to vote on that separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right, thank you. We are now moving on to our resolutions and ordinances. Now, the first item is the first use of our new rule from rules review. So I will read this, and then I will ask for a motion. This is an approval of a request by two Alders pursuant to Rule 13, Chapter 2.16, to schedule a meeting of the Committee of the Whole for discussion and consideration of responses by the city and county to the homeless, comment by providers of services to the homeless, and creating a new Department of Social Development and Action in the Wausau City Government. Looks like I have a motion by Alder Larson and a second by Alder Herbst. I think we're going to discuss this now. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I guess I would oppose the request for Committee of the Whole. I think that, you know, there are discussions that are already happening within the city. Public Health and Safety has a homelessness update as a standing item on its agenda every month. I think people who are interested in what's happening and have ideas and comments to make can either watch or attend that meeting at any time, and they'll be given whatever floor time they need to make comments or offer their ideas. I think that, you know, as I had said in my comments with the presentation tonight, the work of the task force continues. The agencies involved in doing this continue to do their work on a daily basis, including the one that's here tonight. And I also think that, going forward, creating a city department at a substantial taxpayer expense is likely redundant with the work that the county social services department already does. They've got a committee for it, they have agencies for it. All we need to do is partner with those agencies, and CHC has a new director, there's relationships to be built there. Those are key to the success of our homeless outreach efforts. So I think that all of it can be achieved without creating another level of bureaucracy. I mean, that really is what this is. And really, a Committee of the Whole is us sitting around talking about what we're either going to do or not do. That committee can't spend any money, it can't make any final decisions. All it can do is make referrals to other committees. Public Health and Safety has this item every single month, and so if there's discussion to be had, we'll have it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Gisselman.
Yes, thank you. I'm part of the initiator for this proposal, because I feel the Committee of the Whole, the city council, has to really become informed as a group. I mean, the city council is going to be having to make decisions with regard to financing policies, with regard to easing the level of homelessness in the city. If this is our, if this is what we, our aim is to ease the level of homelessness in the city, I think the city council as a group has to be involved. We're going to have to deal with financing, we're going to have to deal with policies. But first of all, let's listen to the providers, the issue of the mental, the mental illness of homelessness people. Well, how is, I want to hear from North Central Healthcare. I was disappointed that some of their crisis was discontinued for a while. I think that the county, North Central, is charged in this county with taking care of the mentally, of those people that need mentally help. And I think that we, as the city council, has to hear from North Central and see where exactly they are going. Maybe we have to encourage our county supervisors to work with them a little bit more. But I think that all around, with regard to hearing from other providers, Catholic charities, I want to see some ideas. I want to see some plans out there that provide this city council and this city with some avenues to easing the population of homeless in this community. The Committee of the Whole can hear that it's the city council that's going to be deciding this eventually, but I want, I do this so that the city council can be completely informed and with high hopes of helping the homeless in this community. That's why I, along with Mr. Killian, have requested this. It's not a decision. This Committee of the Whole meeting is, I'm not sure what will happen, but at least we have the opportunity to hear from providers and to hear the state of homelessness in this community. And that's why I'm proposing this Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, and I have to agree both with Alder Gillian and Alder Rasmussen. Being on the Public Health and Safety Committee, I actually kind of asked to be on it for this term, because I wanted to help work on this problem. And I see, you know, this is a problem that's not going to go away overnight. I wish we could just wave a magic wand and it'd all go away, but it's a work in progress. And we've accomplished a lot this year. We've got a lot more to accomplish. It's, as I said, it's ongoing. I would be willing to vote for the call meeting and just see what happens and go from there. I also agree with Alder Rasmussen. I think the council, you know, what work we could, what work we do through the Public Health and Safety Committee, you know, also goes to the council as a whole. But then again, you know, if we have a call meeting, who knows what ideas we could get for there. So I'll support the meeting, and we'll go on from there.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, Alder Gisselman had addressed some points that I agree with, and I'd also start by saying that I applaud what the police department has done to date, and private sector groups, and really appreciate how various entities have stepped up to the plate. And I agree with what a citizen said earlier, that at times, things should be looked at dispassionately. I imagine that was meant to mean objectively. However, it is possibly, it is possible to assess things objectively while not losing our compassion, and often, they go hand in hand together quite well. So, you know, this had come up in Human Resources Committee when the liaison was first discussed by Human Resources, and I think we had a logical discussion during that meeting, and part of that discussion touched on the importance of classification, right? So it essentially, classification helps to identify what something is and what it is in relation to other items. That's why when you go into the supermarket and you're looking for an apple, you don't go to go to the meat department, you go to the produce section because that's where it should be and where you'd anticipate it will be. And that's why we need to make a distinction about police response to the unhoused when it is either incidental or out of necessity, and making that the go-to umbrella under which we put health and human service issues. So it is not with any lack of appreciation or with disregard that these ideas have been brought up. In fact, you know, I think it's not much different in government than it is in marketing or business. So when there's an important issue, what we're looking for here is a policy response, not a public relations response. And I think tonight, we got a little bit of both earlier, but what's really important is the policy issue and the people we serve. And another thing that's similar between government and business is the concept of test measure optimize, right? So you're always looking to try things, to evaluate them, and then you move ahead accordingly with optimizations that may improve the outcome. So this isn't really, that's not really a matter of opinion, but a matter of logic. So when we talk about this tonight, I think the matter that's before us isn't to debate the merits of, you know, could such a department be useful? It's, we're really just, as a body, saying, let's have a discussion about these things. And I think it would be a big red flag if our government or here, or any level of government, said, we're just not going to allow discussion on important policy matters unless it's confined to the select few that have controlled it to date. So we've seen that with economic development in town, with environmental issues, and it has not been successful. So what I would suggest is that we release those controls and have a productive, healthy discussion about these matters. And some things were brought up earlier, and I think they were stated in good faith and with confidence, but I'm not sure that they were entirely accurate, at least not complete, perhaps. You know, we talk about the connection between addiction and mental health and homelessness. True, I mean, particularly in Wisconsin, we have to remember just what an important matter, say alcoholism, is, you know. So we've got a trinity in Wisconsin. It's known for the Packers cheese and alcoholism. And we can't just dismiss that last item. I think we have to address it with open eyes. So how have we addressed it? It wasn't just during construction of the healthcare center addition that the treatment programs were halted or closed for a time. It was also during COVID. So when I inquired with the county about, hey, what treatment options have been available during this period over a year or two, particularly for the unhoused who may not be able to drink or consume alcohol in certain shelters, I mean, not, wasn't their fault, and I'm not saying it was, but due to circumstance, they've been closed for a good part of the last couple years. That's a problem. And in terms of during the extreme cold and weather conditions that we experienced in late December and early January, there was an effort by the community to step up and meet that crisis. However, the information I got from the ground, and it was from multiple sources, and I got multiple citizen concerns, was that there were gaps in coverage in the schedule. And so due to the concern and those gaps, that an effort was made for private nonprofits to extend their hours and so forth to meet that. What this discussion would do in the Committee of the Whole to hear not just from city, but also the county and private sector entities, would be to get a more comprehensive picture than we've really gotten to date. We haven't dealt much with the county or how it could be involved, how it could be involved with the city, and what those interactions may look like. And just a couple other things, you know, I think when people hear the phrase "social development," it sounds like Mr. Gisselman and I called Havana to get some insight on a communist plot or something. That is not the case. So Marathon County has a social services department, it has a health department, Wausau has neither. That has not always been the case. Wausau did have health personnel. It wasn't Bigby, I think it was Mr. Bugby, who up until the early to mid 20th century had served as kind of a health and human services figure in town here. So it's not that this would be a radical new concept because, hey, we had it before. So I think we need to start this discussion, and there's no anticipation this would happen overnight, but to cover these departmental and structural deficits, I think we need to have that discussion because it could take maybe years if there is a desire to look at something like this, that we at least start the conversation. Now, in terms of cost and I think some concerns about what that would mean to an already burdened or leveraged city, what I would like to bring to our discussion, if discussion is allowed in Wausau on these topics, which I'm hoping it will be, that actually it can be more cost-effective to implement certain services and approaches because it actually reduces certain responses that take a considerable amount of taxpayer funding, like emergency responses and so forth. So I think we could probably pull some studies from other municipalities that a housing-first approach has actually resulted in cost savings for the municipality. But I won't take any more time because it wasn't, I think, the intent of this body to debate the merits. The only question in front of us now is, will we be allowed, as a Committee of the Whole, to discuss matters that are critically important to the people we serve? And I surely hope the answer is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Herbst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a new pen, and I have to admit, my new pen is out of control. I did not mean to second Lou Larson's motion, so I'd like to remove.
Is that something that we can do after we've already started discussing?
See my new pen?
I mean, we've already kind of...
Yeah, I think you've already started discussion. I think if she'd withdrawn it perhaps before discussion started, that might have been more timely.
Point of order next time, maybe.
Perfect. Thank you. Alder Denis.
Thank you. My gut is that I wouldn't support adding this kind of a department, but my gut also says, and I've been asking for some time, what is the county doing? And if we can have the county here, I'm all for trying to get that to happen. Let's get them in the room and have the discussion. I don't think there's any harm in that. I know we do discuss this at Public Health and Safety on a regular basis, but we need to do something to move the cheese because we have been talking about it for a long time. I think maybe we've got a reminder with the cold snap that it isn't automatic that we, I mean, we found places for people, but we should have, we want to see what happens when that happens again, or we should be prepared for it. So I'd be willing to support a Committee of the Whole to discuss some of these things, and assuming that the county is already committed to being here. Is that an assumption, or have they signed on to that?
I have, I told the county administrator that this discussion was happening, but obviously there's not a commitment from them, but I would, I have no problem asking them. We've had conversations about adjacent issues.
Well, we've, we're on the record as asking them here, and I would hope they don't turn us down.
Alder Lukens. I'm sorry, maybe before you start, I really do think if you have a relationship or you don't, definitely contact your supervisor and add some pressure. That's what I've done. Alder Lukens.
Thank you. So I guess I just have a question. I, I'm not, I don't serve currently on the Public Health and Safety Committee, although that was one I wanted to serve on, but I'm also only one person, and I serve on quite a number of other committees. And I, I just physically, like, can't keep up as much as I would like to on that. So I have been learning, I have been trying to learn more. I worked, years ago, I worked at the Job Center. I worked for a nonprofit at the Job Center building in Wausau, and there were unhoused that came in there too, just like the library. So it's not that I'm completely unfamiliar with this. I work with students who have been unhoused, so one who now doesn't live in a regular, you know, residence. But anyway, so I'm trying to learn more about this. I've been trying to learn more from what other cities are doing and just all sorts of, all sorts of places. But I guess, you know, I personally too, and I know we're not here to debate that, but I don't, I think that creating another department, that all takes time. And I, so I know that there's a lot of controversy about this in the community. And I'm just going to say that I also know that there are a lot of people that tend to write their opinions on social media, you know, on media sites, without really being involved and seeing. I'm just, I'm just going to say, I'm a newbie on the council, right? But I also, in serving on a number of different committees, I see what different alders are doing, and I get to hear from them. And I don't believe that there are people on this council that just don't care. I don't believe that at all. So I do think it's unfortunate in our community that, I wish that more people could come together, and a lot of the people that are, that make the comments on social media that aren't involved in it would, would be willing to be a part of the solution rather than always just criticizing when they're not at all involved. And I don't mean anyone in this room. That's not what I mean. So I just want to make that really clear because I appreciate the efforts of those of you. So anyway, just to say that I don't know personally that creating a new department of it, I mean, I, I want, I'm an action person, I want solutions. I want quick solutions, but I also know that it's a very, very complex matter, and I know there's a lot more that I have to learn. So my question is, you know, a Committee of the Whole meeting is that one where other agencies, you know, other agencies would be involved, or is it just, my understanding is it's the council, so it would be? Okay. So, I mean, I guess I would just say that I'm open to learning more because I am in a learning mode about this, but, you know, I guess I also respect what those of you on Public Health and Safety are doing, and the Housing Task Force and everything else. And I would like to have the time to learn more about that. So that's not a clear answer, but I guess I just do want to make that statement that I really do believe there's a whole lot of people that care about this in this community and on this council. So I would hope that we, as a council, could try not to throw daggers and try to, you know, really, really try to come, try to be involved in a supportive way, all of us, to be, to do something positive. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, and I do think that while the meeting would be of this body, I know that all of us who work here every day would be gathering all of the information that we could to ensure that you have it, and also inviting people who have that expertise to be a part of that conversation. Now, some of the ways the conversation has been framed might be complicating people's willingness to accept it, but we would certainly hopefully create a hospitable environment to have productive conversations. And that would be my effort towards this goal too. So Alder Mc, sorry, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I think also, though, if we're going to have such a meeting, we have to be realistic in our expectations of what the outcomes will be. You know, if we request the county administrator's presence, he's likely very willing to come and talk with us and share his understanding of the problem. But he also serves at the pleasure and at the direction of a 37-member board that has a rural majority.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight-member board that has a rural majority. And, you know, in past discussions where we have looked for that partnership, there has been a prevailing opinion that homelessness and, you know, things that are tied to it are urban problems, other people's problems. Now, we do have, you know, we don't supervise county departments, but we absolutely need them. We don't want to duplicate them, and we shouldn't be creating departments because our alliance with the county departments either does or doesn't work. You know, we don't create redundancies to work around people that aren't necessarily willing to work with us. So, you know, I think there's bridges to be built. There's a new director at NCHC, that's huge. And I think our staff will be working, and the mayor will be working, to build those bridges and gain that understanding so that we can have that proactive relationship. When all of the progress was happening, it was happening when the former NCHC director was in place, and as soon as he left and an interim was replaced, was set in that spot whose mission was to solve financial problems almost exclusively, progress stopped. So I think that relationship can be rebuilt, and I think progress can happen. I don't think that we should assume that we're going to solve anything with the Committee of the Whole, you know, and, but I also think that we, this time, have the benefit of a duly-appointed member. Mr. Gisselman serves on the county board as well. You know, they have committees that address these things as well, and I think that, you know, as a duly-appointed public official, he has the ability to start some of those conversations down the street that the rest of us maybe haven't been successful in starting. So, you know, I think conversations can happen. I don't know that we're going to get far with the Committee of the Whole. And I think, other than us all recognizing that there's a problem, and that it's a complex one, and that we need to solve it, we alone will never solve it. None of us alone have enough money to solve it. So, you know, I don't know that we would walk out of there ahead of where we began. So that's just my take. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think I'm speaking out of school here. I had contacted a higher up with the county and discussed these matters over, you know, a few weeks ago, and it was not my impression that there was any indifference or unwillingness to have joint conversations with the city. And if we need to build new bridges, let's send it to Public Works first and get the bridges built. We were able to put together a million dollars in like 24 hours to help buy the mall for some upscale development, but we can't come together as a body and try to figure out effective solutions for something this critical. So I don't think the prelude to such a meeting is kind of inevitable failure. I don't think that sets a really good context for any meeting in which we're trying to come up with solutions. But we often will get the same outcomes if we just limit ourselves to the same tactics and approaches. So I think that, you know, rural, urban, elephant, donkey, elefunkie, any of the differences don't matter. I have confidence that in our county, you know, we got Wausau, a lot of areas are like Wausau, that people care, they're good people, and when they know the facts, they will step up, and we can do this jointly and in a unified fashion and achieve results that we have failed to achieve to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder McElhany.
Thank you. I guess I just want to limit the expectations that are being put up about a cow. We don't know if the county will show up. Are they going to, if they do, are they going to present what they're able to do, or are they just going to be listening? I'm worried about what we're pointing out to the public about what a cow is going to do and coming up with solutions for the homeless. This has been, comments tonight, this has been a long, long-term problem, and it's not a Wausau problem. a long, long-term problem, and it's not a Wausau problem. All around the United States, we have a homeless problem. And if it was easy to solve, and we could all get together in a cow, and we could all, you know, figure out solutions, that's fine. We would have done that. This is very, very complex. We're talking about people with mental health, AODA problems, people that, you know, do not, we, we heard from Tracy, people that do choose to stay outside, for whatever reason. It's abominable to us, but they have their reason. So, we have to figure out a way to get them treatment, and them to accept treatment. And to do that is complex, and it's not something that this council has the expertise in. And that's where I really am pushing back, because I have worked in human services for a very long time. And I have worked in case management and trauma-informed care every single day. And, and we can certainly come up with whatever, you know, can we do this, or can we do that? But that's what the Homeless Task Force is doing, in coming that and then bringing it forward. I, I guess I'm really not understanding how 11 of us are going to throw around and come up with something new that's going to solve this problem in a night. Do, you know, if there's something specific we want to do, let's figure it out. Is there, can we, are we not having good enough, um, things with the county that they're not responding to case management concerns? Okay. How can we figure that out? If you're going to go simp, simply like that, is that something that we need to discuss? Can a cow accomplish that, or is that better done, not publicly, but be, you know, but by staff to staff? And then, if there's something the council can do, then bring it back. I don't, you know, what I don't want is finger pointing, because when we point a finger, three more point back at us. And that's what's been happening right now. That's what happened over Christmas. It's like, nobody was doing anything. In fact, that nobody knew what everybody was doing, and people were doing things. And so, we need to understand and not keep pointing fingers, and somebody's not doing something, and you should do better, and you don't care. It's very frustrating to me, because everybody cares. We've all, Alder Rasmussen has been on this Homeless Task Force for years. Ben Lee and the United Way has done this for years. If it was easily solved, it would be solved. So, I don't mind cows, but I don't like the way this council speaks to each other. I have gotten calls from different people, from couns, council members calling me, saying, why is there such finger pointing, and nasty posts on social media from council members? As council president, shame. Everybody cares. Nobody, I'm very tired of it. I think the mayor can back me up about how tired I was over this period. I was up every night. I, I, I contacted the police. The police contacted, we, we were in contact with the shelters. Nobody doesn't care. I, I'm, I'm just so upset. It's like, we all care. We have to come together and find out solutions, but are we the ones to bring up the solutions? Or is it something that the experts bring up and come to council and say, we need this and that, like we did with CPC? We need a, a 12-month shelter with day services. We need someplace for them to go during the day. We need, um, you know, lo, affordable housing. That's what we can do. I don't mind having a cow, but I don't want this finger pointing that's being done. I, we have to decide what we're going to do, and I would be ve, I would really tell the public, be very careful, a promising county coming here, and, and, and having a good discussion, and they'll come leave and say, we'll do all this stuff, because I do not believe that's going to happen, or would have happened so far. So, all I'm asking is, I am willing to go to any meeting, anytime, but we just have to be, we have to work together, because as, we will never solve this as finger pointing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you. Um, I'm just going to agree. I support what Alder McElhany just said, as far as, um, I too think, um, like I said before, I think everyone on this council cares. But I don't think it helps to have the finger pointing. I know, like I said, I'm new. Integrity's important to me, and I, I guess, I, that's just not ever going to solve anything. So, um, I realize too, I guess, I, I mean, I agree that one meeting isn't going to solve everything. We can't possibly be responsible for everything. I've worked in, you know, I work in the school system. I've worked in law offices. I worked for nonprofits. I've worked in a lot of different places over the years, and things are a process. And I think the other thing is, um, you know, I, I personally don't think, I don't, I don't wear rose-covered glasses, believe me. But at the same time, I don't believe everyone, or, or that, you know, different people have motives to, I don't think that there are these conspiracies going on. And so, I think I would, I would appreciate us being willing to put our trust in each other, to, and to work together. And, yes, to not, as I said before, throw daggers, because, you know, as a council member sitting on this, um, all of that takes up a lot of time, and we're all busy, and we could be using that time to be productive. So, I guess I would appreciate that we're all willing to be part of the solution, and not be second guessing everything that, that someone says. And it, you know, I guess that's the way that I approach my position here, that the, you know, the staff and in the city departments, they are the experts in their field. I mean, yes, our job is to question. Our job is a check, right? But the constant, you know, battling isn't going to help anyone, and it's certainly not going to get people housed and keep them housed. So, I think I would like to see our efforts be productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I first want to say thank you, Alder McElhany, for your leadership. Um, you know, serving on, uh, on the Public Health and Safety Committee is, has been a challenge. And, um, you know, we've, we've done a lot for this community, um, and, and is there, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot more to do, you know, but, but as was brought up, the finger pointing needs to stop. You know, um, yes, there's more to do. Are we perfect? No, we're not, because we're all individuals, and, and, and every day is, you know, we, we struggle for perfection, which we'll never meet. You know, so, um, I just want to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else, um, with a request to speak, but I just want to thank you for the way we've handled this discussion. I think a lot of people have been kind of vulnerable, so thank you. Um, with that, I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes eight to three.
Thank you. All right. Whew, I feel like we are having, experiencing emotional whiplash right now. So, I'm just going to take one breath. Um, the next item on our agenda is item number 221203. Um, this is confirmation of mayor's appointment to the position of Human Resources Director. I'm really excited to introduce you to James Henderson, who joined us, um, the week of Christmas. Um, that's how he spent his holiday. So, I would, maybe before we have a motion, but it looks like we have a motion, so thank you for that, Alder McElhany and Alder Watson. But I would love for, um, James, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and giving maybe a little spiel, whatever you feel like sharing with this council, and also recognizing that this is recorded for the rest of time too. So, welcome, and thank you.
All right, I'll try to behave myself. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank the Board of Alderman and the mayor for giving me this opportunity. Uh, this is a, and you guys already know this, this is a great, small city. Um, to give you a little bit of history, I actually applied for this job five years ago, and I wasn't successful, so, you know, like the engine that could, you just keep trying, and, and, and hopefully this time I'm there. So, you know, when I came here the first time, I can, I always will remember, because I was, uh, was driven around by this driver, and when I was coming for my interview, he said, uh, man, I should hope you get the job, because this city really needs somebody like you. And I, and it's just something, it just stuck with me. I didn't get it, but, you know, that, that, uh, statement just really stuck with me, and I've just really been impressed by the friendliness, uh, of the town. But, and just a little bit about me, uh, I'm from Dyersburg, Tennessee. Uh, no one's ever heard of Dyersburg, but most people have heard of Memphis. I'm about from 80 miles north of Memphis. Uh, I actually have a bachelor's degree in, uh, human resource or management with a specialty in human resources, and I have a master's degree in, uh, human resource development from the University of Texas. Uh, I also hold certifications from SHRM, uh, and also IPMA HR, uh, and, and also from INPELRA, which is, uh, National Labor Relations Association. So, I'm really excited to be here, to get started, to build relationships with, uh, with, with you as a, as a governing body, and also building relationships with other directors. So, I'm really excited to be here, and, uh, I'm really anxious to get to know you some on a, on a, I'll work with you on a business level, but really on a personal level also. So, thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you so much. We are so excited you're here, and for the council. We've already had some kind of intense moments, um, so thank you for your support in those moments too. I don't know if there are any questions or comments, but, um, I do see we have a motion in a second, so we can just get to the formality if we would like.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
Unanimous. Thank you so much, James, for joining our team. Thank you. Okay. Um, next up, we have confirmation. Uh, it's item number 2310, 0103, mayor's appointments. Um, I have Alder Lukens replacing Alder Watson on CDA. There's some scheduling difficulties. So, thank you, um, for being willing to switch midstream. Um, it looks like I have a motion by Alder Watson. Thank you. Uh, ready to go. Um, and a second by Alder Herbst. Is there any discussion? Okay, I think we can vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have file number 230109. It's an ordinance from SCISM, amending section 10.20.080A, designate no parking, excuse me, on the east side of Torni Avenue between McDonald Street and Townline Road. It looks like I have a motion from Rasmussen and a second from Watson. I don't see any discussion.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to zero.
Thank you. All right. Next up is file number 211109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving modification of the 2022 budget for Franklin Street improvements performed by the Marathon County Highway Department. Um, I would entertain a motion. Hmm. Looks like I have a motion by Herbst, and a second by Martins. Alder Larson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This is, uh, another one of these items where, um, this council is, uh, after the fact. You know, um, where they're asking for $24,668, I believe, for construction on, on, uh, what the county put in on, uh, on Franklin Street. And first, and first of all, I'm, I'm basing my comment on solely what was in the packet. Um, I know, as a motorcyclist, I use that street quite frequently. I know that this project was in the works, uh, early fall, late summer. Um, I think that, that I'm going to make a few points, that I feel that this is a, a double taxation on our citizens, because of the fact that, you know, we, I'm, I'm going to throw a figure out there. I'm going to say we have approximately probably 25, 30,000 vehicles that are, that are paying a $25 wheel tax to the, the county. You know, so if the county needs money for a road that's actually a county road, uh, you know, they should probably use the money that we give them out of our wheel tax. So, I will not be supporting it for that reason. And, and second of all, um, what I find disturbing is, is the email chain that, that was included in the packet, where, uh, you know, I believe the statement, I don't, I'm just going to grab it up here, uh, 67, it says, uh, email from Eric Lindman that it's okay, let's plan for it, and we will find the funds. Well, where is it that, uh, a city employee finds taxpayer funds? We are the governing body here. We are the ones that, that find taxpayer funds. And why, as I mentioned prior to this, this, this project was done in late summer, early fall, this is May. Why wasn't this brought to the SCISM committee? Why wasn't this brought to council for vote? And then why wasn't it brought to finance? You know, this is another, this is another, uh, example of doing business behind closed doors without council knowledge. And this Alder person is, is very upset about it, and this Alder person will not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe a little background on this project.
This money was within our budget in 2022, and so we're moving it from one account to the other. And so, we had asphalt overlay project, um, that came in overbid. Um, so, and the county was doing, uh, Franklin Street, or I think it's County Z, outside of the city. A year or two ago, we did a portion of Franklin Street, and the county approached us and said that they would be willing to do it at a lesser cost than what our bids came in at, uh, with American Asphalt, uh, to come and do the remainder of that section on Franklin Street within the city limits. And so, um, it was within the budget that was approved by the city council. Uh, it was in our Streets and Lines budget, and so we're just moving it from our Streets and Lines budget to, uh, the pavement budget. So, it is within the 22 budget.
Thank you. Um, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Um, while I agree with Alder Larson about wheel tax, I'll, um, never stop complaining about the fact that the city, um, en masse pays a monumental amount of wheel tax every year, and yet not one penny of that can go to city streets, so they say. Um, we've even asked that, um, they use some of our wheel tax that they collect from us on an annual basis, um, to put it toward the in-town portion of county roads, which this is, but that's also usually a no. So, knowing how that conversation has gone in the past, I think this kind of falls into an area of what's done is done, and ultimately, if we were able to cost share with them on the volume of the pavement that was purchased, we're probably saving money. But, uh, if they would have funded this out of wheel tax, I'd be smiling too. So, just, it will never solve itself, and I don't know that we'll ever get rid of the wheel tax, but, um, I think people should know that while it is out there shining up rural roads, it does nothing for city residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question for Mr. Lindman, based on, uh, something Alder Larson had brought up. Uh, in the sequence of events, had there been a formal agreement for the work prior to it taking place?
No, just the email chain. That, that county was willing to come in, uh, for those approximate prices, and then, um, they would let us know the exact prices afterwards. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? It looks like we're ready to vote.
Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry. Do you have another comment?
I do, yes. I hit the wrong button. Okay.
Oh, push your button.
Um, if, if this, you know, why wasn't this brought to SCISM if this was just the email chain? Um, you know, regardless if it was already in the budget or not, I mean, it, it, it should have, I, I, I'm, it should at least, you know.
Right, I mean.
We, we, they should have came to the SCISM and, and, and said that, you know, this is what we're going to do. This is, the monies have already been appropriated. You know, and that, this is where, um, I get upset, because the fact that we are, again, left out of the loop. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, uh, past practice has been on asphalt overlay, there's a budget that we work within, right? And so, it's not necessarily all of those streets are, are identified or designated at the are identified or designated at the time, uh, and they don't come, right? So, uh, we have a budget and then based on that budget, we select the streets, uh, on our asphalt overlay that are, because there's no special assessments or anything for those. And so, um, now, if there's a different practice that you would like, if, if this body wants, um, all of our overlay projects to come forward to committee for approval, the types where that money is going to be spent and, and I, I, we're happy to do that, but that's, that's just not how past practice has been.
Haven't they done that in the past? I mean, as long as I've been on the SISM committee, all the overlay projects are, are out there and, and, and discussed.
The, the street reconstruction projects are, and the SISM committee does approve that and it goes through the process because there's special assessments associated with that. Um, we do identify, uh, certain projects for asphalt overlay, but typically, um, what we do every year is request a budget, which has been, you know, we try to increase it every year, but, you know, it's within our infrastructure budget that, uh, that the city council approves.
See, this, uh, I'm, I'm basing all my comments on, on what's in the packet and none of this is included in the packet. So, uh, just the email chain and, uh, and, and the, uh, invoice, you know.
Correct. Yep.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments? Okay, it looks like we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 92.
Thank you very much. Um, all righty, next up is file number 911008. That is a resolution from the Finance Committee adopting a grant policy. And I'm saying it kind of slow because I know, um, the Finance Director is listening, um, and she might be making her way up this way. But at this point, um, it looks like we have a motion from Alder Watson and a second by Carol Lukens. Is there anybody that needs, um, more detail on this or are we good to vote? Okay. Um, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just did have one question for Ms. Groot, uh, something that she had, uh, brought up at, uh, she's absent.
She's here, she's listening, and, and she said that she was ready to.
And, uh, nothing pressing. It's probably something we can, uh, we can address at some point in the near future. Uh, I'll just, uh, lay it out there as a, a question that can be perhaps answered down the road. In a September, uh, 2022 meeting that discussed the, the grant issue, it was also, uh, discussing, uh, compliance with, uh, federal funding requirements. And this had come up during that, uh, meeting conversation, I think it was September 27th. And that, uh, compliance, uh, element had related to block grants. So, something very specific, but I was going to ask Ms. Groot because that had come up during the, uh, grant conversation, if there was, uh, any other similar items. And is this something that if we put in place would help to address, uh, some of those things that have occurred in the past?
Okay.
And, uh, that can wait till the future if she's not presently available.
I know she's here and I know she's listening, so. Okay. If you want, we could just take a brief intermission, um, and we could, if that works for this body, uh, just a maybe two-minute break. Okay, I'm seeing some nods. We're going to do that. We have a motion. We will come back and we will discuss this. Uh, be right back. All right, welcome back, everyone. Um, thank you. We are no longer having a seance. We have our Finance Director right here. Um, and I briefed her on the question, but the question is, does this, um, will this, um, affect the types of compliance and grant issues that we saw, um, as it relates to, uh, a community development discussion that was had in September?
Yeah, I'm hoping it will be a step forward, right? So, you know, because of the size that the city is, everyone wears a lot of hats. And some people are managing grants, um, that don't have a lot of accounting experience. And, um, you know, the goal is, is to try to connect more the accounting and oversight with the people who are managing grants. You know, if we were a big community or a big college, we could probably have our own, um, people who all they do is the accounting, uh, and reporting for grants. Um, and that isn't the case here. So, you know, with some additional oversight, we're hoping to catch some of the problems that we've experiencing. If you, I had shared an email, uh, with, uh, Mr. Killian today, or Alderman Killian, and, you know, you could see that there was kind of a theme about not proper reviews. And so, you know, having, um, someone go through and verify that. And it's not only that you want the procedure, but you want some documentation. So, somebody's, you know, like initiating or, um, showing some sort of, uh, approval for that. I'm hoping that Workday will also, our new financial software will also help with that because it has some financial reporting, uh, capabilities in it. And so, that will allow us to, I guess, um, do some reporting that then that individual can review. And so, I'm, I'm just hoping to improve the situation. And I think the other thing is, you know, to have more transparency in the grants and more pre-approvals, I think are important too.
Uh, thank you and thank you for your quick response today and for the information. I haven't reviewed it all, but it was helpful to get that, uh, so quickly. So, yes, I mean, if you think this would be a step forward in, uh, addressing those types of things, then I think it sounds, uh, positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments? I'm not seeing anybody, so.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. We are moving on to item number 230106. It's an ordinance from the Plan Commission resoning 1427 Lake Street from a single-family residential, uh, zoning district and 1601 and 1607 Chella Street from a single-family residential to a townhome residential zoning district. It looks like I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen. Um, do I have a second? And a second by Alder Larson. And are there any discussion or questions? Oh, oh, okay. I guess it looks like we actually have the motion. I've been corrected. Um, lots of callers here. Um, Alder Herbst has motioned and Alder Lukens has seconded. Alder Rasmussen, you have requested to speak.
Thank you. Um, first, I think that it's important for us to, um, bear in mind that this is a zoning request. It's not a funding request. And zoning is about appropriate land use. And that's what the Plan Commission had to decide when they recommended the project. Is the proposed land use appropriate for the site or isn't it? And that really has to be our primary focus of concern. Is it or is it not an appropriate use for the parcel in question? Um, with regard to concerns about traffic and safety, townhomes, a similar townhome concept, we have evidence has worked, um, on Second Street and Third Street, just blocks from here. Um, they do not create, um, the issues that, um, would create, um, traffic and safety difficulties in a neighborhood. Um, they've not on Third Street and there's a good number of them, um, already, already present. Different developer, same concept. Um, the project is not city-funded and because it's not city-funded, it is up to the private sector to decide if that project succeeds or fails. It's not our job to decide that. Um, we just have to decide if it's a, an appropriate land use. Uh, this particular parcel was available for years. No one came forward to try to develop it for anything, um, single-family or anything other than, um, the residential exposure that's been proposed. And, you know, I think whether we like the, you know, a particular developer or we agree with their behaviors or their tactics, or we agree with, you know, this he said, she said stuff that happened in public comment, I think we have to keep our eye on the fact that, um, the Plan Commission has unanimously recommended that this site is appropriate for this type of construction. And that's the question that we've been asked. It's not been asked as to whether or not we agree with someone's behavior or not. It's, um, no one has asked us to vote on whether or not, um, you know, we feel that, um, not having the tax revenue from this project would allow us to do more for homeless folks because it, that's not the question that we've been asked. There's no city funding in this project. So, um, that's, I guess, what we need to focus on. Um, based on that and the, um, drawing that we were provided of the site and the site plan, I intend to support the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, when is the city going to be stopped? When is the city going to stop forcing their will on the people? Um, the neighborhood doesn't want it. It doesn't fit in a neighborhood. Uh, this is a low to middle-income neighborhood. Um, the Planning Committee, it was not unanimous. It was a six-to-one vote. And, and actually, I, I was, I was astounded at the Planning Committee because they, they knew exactly what was going on this property. And judging by the amount of the people that were here from the neighborhood, they basically slapped them in the face and, and said, "We're going to shove this down your throat whether you like it or not." And, and this is not appropriate for this neighborhood. When you say it's not going to cause any traffic problems, I suggest the Alder who said this, "Take a drive down those streets because those are very narrow streets. They're not heavily traveled streets. You're going to, um, you know, you're going to be adding extra traffic to neighborhood streets that, that aren't accustomed to it. They're not built for it." Um, as far as the condominiums on Third, well, Third Street is a heavily traveled street, you know, versus a little neighborhood street where it's, it's just a block. Um, I, I can't support this. Uh, the, the citizens of District 10 are, are tired of having, um, cookie cutter, uh, condos shoved down their throats. And, uh, the neighborhood here does not want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Gisselman.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I also will be voting against this. I, I feel the development just doesn't fit in the neighborhood. I think that this, you, this neighborhood has a unique feel. And I think that this development really throws that off kilter. As I've voted in the past, I'm very sensitive to neighborhoods and how they look and how developments fit within those neighborhoods. Um, and I just, and I agree with the, the neighborhood. I, I feel it really doesn't fit and I, and I'll be voting against that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a comment, but may I ask the, uh, city attorney a question first?
Absolutely.
Uh, thank you for that opportunity. So, uh, it sounded earlier, uh, from a comment from one of my colleagues that, uh, it was almost prohibited from taking in, uh, public input and feedback on a zoning decision like this, that, uh, perhaps that wasn't the, uh, suggestion intended, but something to the effect of we should only be considering, "Does this land use fit in this parcel?" But it's my, it was my understanding that, uh, public in, input and feedback was, was kind of a healthy and expected component of any policy deliberation. Is there anything prohibiting us from taking into consideration, uh, public input on this matter?
Not that I'm aware of, but, um, you can ask Alder Rasmussen what she meant by her comments. I'm not going to make any assumptions about, about what she meant or by what she said. I don't know if Bill Hebert wants to come up and speak to this or if there's any, uh, any advice that was provided the Plan Commission. I don't attend that meeting regularly, unfortunately, or I'm, if seen the packet with any staff memo that mentioned what they needed to take into consideration, but.
I can pose the question in a way that will not require clarification, uh, from any other member. I'll just say it directly. Uh, are we prohibited from taking into account public input in our, uh, decisions in such matter, matters? Uh, whether Mr. Hebert or yourself would like to.
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, uh, moving, uh, forward on the topic then with my comment, I would just say that I believe the developer earlier, that he, uh, does care, uh, deeply about Wausau. And I, I know from his past that, uh, he has indeed, uh, done some very positive, uh, things for Wausau. But I would say that, you know, when I had, uh, decided to become, uh, an elected representative, and I believe it's similar for Alder Larson, part of our desire to do so was to represent, uh, you know, public input and, and feedback in the, uh, district. And, and so, you know, we, we have, uh, close districts, they're neighbors, and we often have, uh, shared, uh, neighborhood meetings. And there's a shared neighborhood, uh, page as well for the districts. And just due to the feedback I've received, uh, from residents, uh, based on concerns, uh, they've raised and, and brought to, uh, my attention, uh, I feel, uh, obligated as the representative to, to represent those, uh, sentiments and concerns tonight. So, well, I do believe that, uh, this is in, uh, good faith. And I believe the developer's statements that he does indeed, uh, care, uh, for Wausau. And I believe he's done some very positive things for Wausau. I'm simply going to be reflecting the, uh, input I've, uh, received from residents to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Herbst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to simply say that I took a look. I drove down to the area and I looked at it and I just didn't feel that, uh, the information that you have in your packet, uh, showing the townhouses, that it looked like it was very much at an angle, that there really wasn't a lot of space there whatsoever. I felt that was a poor location. The townhouses on Third Street, that's a different situation. They look beautiful there. This townhouse in, uh, business that he wants to put up, these eight units, are totally out of place and do not belong there. I sit on the Planning Commission. I was the only one that voted against it. And I'm sitting here tonight and I'm stating the fact that I'm still against it. I think that this, um, planner, this gentleman could find another property somewhere, but this one is totally not suitable for townhouses. Single-family residents, I would agree to that, but not the townhouses. And I do side with the residents that live in that area. My heart goes out to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Um, just to clarify, my comment before was not to indicate that we should not obviously accept or consider public comment, but I think.
or consider public comment, but I think that we also have to balance that public comment with what we are looking at in terms of goals that have been set for us by our residents. And my residents tell me continuously that when it makes sense to do so, and when sensible projects present themselves, they want me to support growth in this city. And, you know, that really is what this is. It grows tax base, it takes a site that no one has wanted for upwards of 20 years, and it makes it into something productive. And, you know, it is an appropriate land use, it's a residential-based land use. If this proposal was for a high-commerce strip mall, it would be a completely different conversation. If it was a factory, it would be a completely different conversation. It's a residential use in a residential area, and I think it'll be a plus. So, I intend to support it. But I think that we also have to, you know, balance both what we heard tonight with what we know needs to happen in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to also add that the neighborhood is not objecting to any single-family homes on this parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that came out of the Affordable Housing Task Force is looking at different ways to put housing in a limited piece of real estate. The city doesn't have a lot of land, and sometimes you, if we can increase density or higher-capacity units, they can be more cost-effective. Building single-family homes down there may not necessarily pencil out, but the way I see this, it's a piece of private property. The developer is building an appropriate residential living quarters. I support this, in part because we need the housing stock in the city. And, you know, I've not seen anything from this developer to give me pause that there's a concern here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Herbst.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My only comment is, you're talking about townhouses, you're talking about only eight families living there. This still is not the proper place for townhouses. Single residents, yes, not townhouses. Take a drive down there, or if you haven't really studied your packet, you'd realize and understand, there's other places that townhouses belong, not there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion or questions? I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion fails five to six.
I'm sorry, no, can we please...
Point of order.
Yeah, decorum, please. Did you have anything else to say? Did you have anything?
That was simply a point of order, Madam Chair.
Thanks. All right, next up is file number... Is that... It's every word. What did I forget? Is that... It was just... What was it? Five, six? But the five, we have. Oh, okay, got you. Thank you. Just looking for clarification. Alrighty, we are moving on next to item number 230107. It's an ordinance from Plan Commission rezoning 1723 to 1725 Boff Street, from a two-flat residential zoning district to a single-family residential zoning district. It looks like I have a motion from Alder Watson and a second by Alder Herbst. Is there any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next up is file number 230113. It's a resolution from the Public Health and, excuse me, Public Health and Safety Committee supporting membership in the Wisconsin Local Government Climate Coalition. Looks like I have a motion by Alder Henke, and I would entertain a second.
There's a motion to amend.
Oh, something just happened. I just crashed.
Now, that's probably me. Would you like to accept the...
I don't know what just happened. Technical.
Okay, there's a motion from Alder Watson.
Henke.
From Alder Watson.
That was the amend, but I'm not, it's not letting me... Okay. Okay, and we're back. Okay. So, here's the deal, I saw that Alder Henke had a motion, and before we amend it, I guess I would like a second.
I am.
Okay, so, we're going to go with Alder Lukens has seconded, if that's okay? And then, excuse me, it's exciting. It looks like we have a motion to amend from Alder Watson. Is that what you intended?
No, my internet went out. I actually meant to move, and then...
Okay, okay, so, we'll just go ahead and not do that. No amendment.
Okay.
So, who's the first in the sign of internet?
Yeah, I feel like maybe the whole internet just...
So, motioner withdrew motion.
Was a little crashy there for a second.
That's what I was saying, motioner withdrew motion, so it was unintentional. Okay, so I have a motion by Henke and a second by Luke.
All right, so we're back. Is everyone back to signed in, it looks like it? No, okay, we're waiting for...
I still show everyone present.
It looks like maybe there's a little bit of a technical. We're getting to that witching hour where the internet likes to do what it does. Yes, that is indeed what it is telling us. Welcome back. Alrighty, so we have a motion by Henke, a second by Lukens, any discussion here? Alder Denny.
Thank you, Mayor. I was one of the two that voted against this in Public Health and Safety. Not that I have anything against this particular group, but in general, I have a principle against endorsement of these such lobby groups, and it seems like it's a group that uses the city memberships to lobby for certain things. So, a lot of the, a lot of the things they cite as work on their website, they show City of Madison, City of Milwaukee, it'll be City of Wausau supports X. So, how do we ensure that we're not signing on to things that we don't necessarily intend to? And I don't see the value of this, it seems to me like they need us more than we need them. Secondly, you know, on their website, they're looking to hire a director for like a hundred to 110,000. I'm just curious, there's nowhere that indicates where they're getting paid, or where they're being funded. I assume, I was told that the city is not paying for this, but who is? Maybe that's not an appropriate question here, but to me, I don't see a necessity for us to be involved in these kind of organizations.
Thank you, Alder Henke.
Thank you. I see this as an opportunity to get a seat at the table at the state, federal level, and be able to steer some of that money. I also feel it mirrors a lot of the goals that we laid out at the beginning of this term, so that's why I supported it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this sounds positive to Alder Denny's questions, who is on point with this organization? Do we know it's a coalition? Do we know who's channeling activities, or who is the point on the organization?
I'm bringing up our city, one of our planners.
I had looked at the website or webpage, it wasn't immediately clear to me.
Right, I believe they're in the process of hiring a director. They have some staff right now, they're kind of getting it off the ground, and they'll be working to transition that over. Just to kind of touch on some of the points that were brought up, I hope I can provide some answers for that. I don't know that I necessarily deem them a lobbying group, but they do advocate for local governments in the ways that local governments can share information and develop strategies to benefit local governments. You know, this is kind of on par with something like the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, which the city is a member of. It's just the fact that this is focused on climate change issues, and getting the local government's voice heard at the state and federal or other levels. So, you know, that's definitely something we're looking for as city staff, we're looking for any kind of help that we can get for the, you know, I would say raft, but maybe cruise ship worth of grants and programs that are now available to us, and trying to figure out what works and what fits. And I would agree, it does get the city a seat at the table. As far as what the city signs on to, so they would, they would send any kind of letters of support, or they would make known opportunities to comment on legislation, and that is all optional, nothing is required, and nothing is done automatically as a point of membership. And that's designated as, the mayor is the person to look at that with staff and determine if that is something appropriate, in line with city goals and plans. So, I was hoping to provide a little bit of clarity to everybody.
It does, thank you very much for the information.
Yeah.
Thank you. May I comment briefly?
Absolutely.
Thank you, yes, so, I will be supporting this, and, you know, I will say that when I listen to various commentary at different levels about environmental policy, you know, there's a lot of focus these days on simply the extreme long-term, like, hey, maybe a river will flood near some upscale apartments in 75 years, but I will point out that we have currently very pressing issues in terms of disproportionate exposure in Wausau's working-class areas that have allegedly resulted in both past and present health challenges. So, while I support, you know, safeguarding against risks in the future, I'd also hope that we, as a city, practice environmental justice today, and not forget that we have present challenges that very much require urgent attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you. As a member serving on the Sustainability Committee, I very much support this, I will be voting in favor of it. Whether or not, you know, I know some people, you know, do not believe in climate change, but I do, and things are changing, and we're seeing the effects here. And, but, you know, I like to be proactive, I like to, I think there's a lot of money federally, that, yes, we can hopefully get a jumpstart on. So, this is a coalition of different, you know, city governments, local governments, so I'm very much in support of this. I think that if we don't look forward and try to be proactive, it's going to cost us down the road, so that's just my comment on it.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I agree with this one as well. We talked about this in Public Health and Safety, you know, politics aside, climate is everyone's problem, and if folks haven't figured that out yet, I guess it bears repeating that ordinarily, this time of the year, it would be 50 degrees colder than what it is today. So, that said, we want to use this as an informational resource, there may be grant funding available, there may be idea-share opportunities available, we want the information resources that will be available from bouncing things off this group. And so, I think that this is a positive step. Like Andy said, nothing is automatic, but I think that to have these resources and to help us navigate going forward what opportunities may exist here, both locally and at larger levels, is of value to us, so hopefully we'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess maybe I just want to share a little bit, we do have a membership currently, and I don't know if this body has voted on that membership to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, but they engage in lobbying and thought leadership, and we really get a lot out of it. And it was actually at a League of Wisconsin Municipalities conference where I first talked to another person who was involved in this program, and they asked if Wausau would be interested. So, I said, "I don't know, but let's talk about it." So, we've talked with staff, we've talked at the Sustainability Commission, and I know that city, one of our city planners, Andy Lynch, had an opportunity to attend a pretty great session that was with the former Deputy Secretary of Energy, where they talked a little bit about, you know, some of the issues facing municipalities as it relates to climate, but also, I mean, really, the bipartisan infrastructure law, all of that, like, we have big opportunities here, and making sure that we capitalize and bring home the bacon is really, really important. So, I see that Alder Denny wants to speak again, so I welcome that.
Just to say, I did get some feedback from staff, and if they support it, you can convince me to, I'll change my mind on this one. But I do want to say, though, that if we're into something that we don't like, I'd like to be able to extract ourselves from this, or if it becomes a membership fee, and we're going to be clipped for some membership subscription, I would hope that it comes back here so we can evaluate that worth.
Sure. Alrighty, it looks like we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you very much, everyone. Alrighty, we are to the point where we're going to ask that we suspend the rules, 6B filing, this does require a two-thirds vote majority. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Herbst, you don't get to discuss this.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, that rule is now suspended. First item here is item number 230104. It's a joint resolution from SISAM and Finance approving the Urban Nonpoint Source Construction Grant Agreement to convert the Strawberry Fields Dry Detention Pond to a Wet Pond. This was approved at both committees, five to zero. Looks like we have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Henke. Is there any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next item is item number 151208. It's a resolution from Finance Committee approving the contract for residential and commercial electrical inspection services between the city of Wausau and village of Weston. This was just approved tonight, five to zero. I have a motion by Alder Herbst and a second by Alder Watson. Is there any discussion or questions? We do have Bill, who's waited patiently this whole meeting, in case you do. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think often the topic of kind of regional cooperation comes up, and the importance of trying to have some synergy in the way we do things, but when we elect to work with surrounding municipalities and villages, it's my opinion, unless legally barred from being able to do so, that we consider if those surrounding towns and villages have cooperated with us for the good of our citizens. And in regard to transit decisions and regional cooperation, my understanding is, at least a couple of years ago, and perhaps something changed, and I'm just not aware of it, but that has not occurred. So, on this issue and moving forward, is just a consistent policy position with surrounding municipalities and villages, my suggestion would be that if they're not going to cooperate with Wausau to help serve our citizens, and that includes those that need bus services to their destinations, then I think my suggestion would be they find some other interim stop-gap measure to fill their service deficit until they're feeling a little bit more like a regional team player. So, I will be voting against this tonight, and I hope Weston changes its disposition on transit policy. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else that has requested to speak, so I think we are ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes nine to two.
All right, thank you very much. Last item, public comment and suggestions. I think there are a couple of people who are still here that I'm not sure if you have intended, but you are welcome? No, no, okay. All right, last item on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Alder Henke and a second by, oh, I guess they're using their thing. Sorry, he pointed at me. So, Watson and Lukens, all in favor, can signify by saying aye. So, Watson and Lukens, all in favor, can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. That was a vibe.